All right, looks like it's six o'clock. I think I saw where Elise may be a little bit late. Denise Bryce, Mike Jewels, okay. All right, all right, so are we ready otherwise?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'd like to call to order the city council work session for July 21st, 2021. This session is being recorded and you can find it on Zoom on a link that is on the agenda. There is also an agenda in Spanish that you can find as well. So this meeting is now called to order. A roll call, please, Sue.
Councillor McBride.
Here.
Councillor Cofield.
Here.
Councillor Arnold Holloman will be late. Councillor Martinez Plankarte.
Present.
Mayor Rogers.
Present.
Councillor Bacon.
Here.
And councillor Finley is on vacation tonight.
Nice. All right, review of the council agenda and meeting, anything folks for the business portion of the meeting tonight? Okay, not seeing anything. What about any council? Oh, Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just wondering, will we, is there any kind of update from Leonard Johnson as of two weeks ago? Do we have any, anything resolved on that yet?
I've gone and talked to him, but there, I wouldn't say there's anything resolved, no.
Yeah, and I've spoken to him a couple of times as well since.
Okay.
All right, anything else, folks? All right, council business items. All right then, we are, unless there's anything else, let's move right into, oh, there it is. UGB, we're looking for direction and here is our community development director, Mr. Doug Rux. Who happens to be muted.
There we go, have to press the right button. Thank you, Mayor. So I thought I'd try something a little different from our meeting discussion we had last month. So I'm going to run through a PowerPoint. This PowerPoint is going to include a conversation we had with the planning commission at their meeting in early June. So information that's not in your RCA. So Sue, next slide. So again, this is a map of our comprehensive plan for the entire community. And so all the areas that are in the different shades of yellow are residential, the different shades of red are commercial. The dark greens are public, quasi-public or parks. And then the colors of blue are industrial. You'll see around the periphery up to the northeast, the east and off to the southeast. There's some hatched areas that are green and I'll get into those and those are urban reserve areas. Next slide. So this is our zoning map. And again, it has a very similar color combination, except for you'll see that there are a variety of areas like down towards the bottom of this map, down at the mill site. That are, have kind of a gold hatching across them and those are properties that have not yet been annexed into the city. But they will, the airport is one of those, the mill area, southern part of the riverfront area. And a little bit over off of Fernwood and then you've got some area over to the west off of Chehalum Drive. Next slide. So this was our residential inventory that we shared with you in May. And so this is our vacant and partially vacant land areas. And so the, the light brown areas are lands that are identified as low density in our comp plan. And again, you can kind of see they're mostly around the periphery. Over off of Chehalum, some stuff up north, which has already changed since we did this particular study. Some land area up behind the Allison Inn. The oranges colors are medium density lands that are within the UGB. And then we've got the reds are high density. And so we don't see a lot of that, you know, an area down off of Springbrook. I, and Fernwood and then an area over off of Highway 240. And Chehalum Drive. And then you see kind of more of a purplish color. And that's kind of our mixed use areas and then some of that that's down in the riverfront. So we got the big green area up towards the center of the map and remember that's Springbrook Properties. And so that's categorized on the legend on this particular map. Next slide. So these are the urban reserves I was talking about. So the gold color are lands that are within our UGB that are not annexed into the city yet. But the green hatched are urban reserve areas. And so what we have is our North Hills, which is up on the north or the top of this map. We have the Clemick Lane, which is over east of the hospital. We have our Springbrook Road South, which is south of Fernwood and to the east of Springbrook. And then we have the Wynewski Road area. So these urban reserves were actually established back in 1995. The bill and administrative rule were done in the 92, 93 timeframe. We did attempt to look at doing some urban reserve, additional urban reserve designations in about the 2005 through 2007 time period. But that process was not successful. Next slide. So here is a map that shows where ODOT has acquired land for phase two of the bypass. So if you start at the bottom of this map, there's some land that used to be in the old alignment of Wilsonville Road, which will become part of the interchange in the future. And then two parcels to the north of Wilsonville Road. One just immediately south of Fernwood and on the western edge of the golf course. The second nine holes. And then the Worth property that was acquired along Worth Boulevard and Providence Drive. And then three parcels that are up towards Highway 99W, one at the end of Harmony Lane and then two actually budding up against Highway 99. ODOT has indicated that they've expended the 10 and a half million dollars for strategic right away acquisition. That was money that was reallocated from phase one of the bypass. Why I bring this up is some of these areas are in an urban reserve currently. So like the South Springbrook Road, so just north of Wilsonville Road at the bottom of the map. You know, the future bypass cuts right to the middle of that one. And then the property to the north, it does a lot of the same, kind of cuts through that. Next slide. So here is the graphic of our commercial industrial vacant, partially vacant inventory. And you can see there's a little bit up at A deck off of East Mountain View. And actually there is some building, so that's more of the partially vacant category. There's a vacant commercial piece over off of North College in Mountain View. Then there's some industrial off of Springbrook in Mountain View, that's part of Springbrook Master Plan. There's still some partially vacant up at the Allison Inn. Then we've got that node of mixed use, it's in the master plan there on the east side of Springbrook Road and Crestview. Then you get down to some smaller parcels, they're in our mixed use on the south side of Highway 99. As you're getting down towards Highway 219, a couple of parcels over off of Springbrook, north and south of Hayes. And then we've got down around the airport. And you won't see on this map, the mill site is not because that's redevelopment. This was inventorying vacant and partially vacant. And so we have some darker blue, which would be available for industrial. Out by the airport, the lighter blue is for hangars. And the lighter green is actually, you know, the airpark and the taxiways and so forth. And then we've got a couple of smaller parcels down off of Wynewski Road, you see kind of towards the bottom of the map. So not a lot of vacant industrial and commercial. The only real commercial here is over off of College. I mentioned last meeting that there's the red area that's up off of Highway 99 across from the hospital and that's Crestview Crossing. Encompasses most of that area. There are a couple of parcels on the east side that are not part of that project. But that area is getting developed for some, I'll call horizontal mixed use with residential and commercial. Okay, next slide, Sue. So this is the map we were talking about last month, kind of the real focus when you look at urban reserves. You look at the hierarchy and where you would start is with exception lands. And so the lighter colored yellow around our urban growth boundary is those exception lands. And so you can see there's lands that are south, kind of south of Highway 240, going all the way down to Dayton Avenue. And going them further to the west. You have a little pocket up north of North Valley Road. You've got stuff north of North Valley and Bell Road, but you're starting to get up in the slopes. And so when we were talking last month about employment lands, they're looking for stuff that's, you know, much flatter. And then you get over on the east and the southeast side. And there's a little bit up there off of Benjamin Road that's exception land. And then you got some that you have to go through resource lands to get to exception lands over off of Corral Creek. Then you got a bunch of resource lands along our southern boundary. And then you've got two little nodes of exception off of Wilsonville Road and then down off of Dog Ridge Road. So when you start to look about, if you have an urban growth boundary expansion program and you start with, you know, looking at your urban reserve areas first, and then you look at your exception lands. And before you get into the resource lands, with those lower class lands of four through six soils would be the third step in that hierarchy. And then the fourth step is to looking at the class one through three soils. So we have a lot of challenges. From all of that. And next slide, Sue. So follow up on the questions from last month. Question was, what are other cities doing on their UGB? So McMinnville did one last year. They had been in process for a considerable number of years. Lafayette did one about three years ago. We talked a little bit about the Clemick Lane in the medical area. And I know the question was, well, what do the medical providers need or what are they looking for? And I would say, I, you know, I didn't have the chance to go and specifically ping, but I can go from past experience that medical uses like to cluster. Near one another for proximity purposes. So that's just a consideration in the future. Are there consultant specialists? Yes. There are a number of consulting firms that operate within Oregon that are experienced in a, working with cities on doing urban growth boundary expansions. And then there was the question about the history and the location and the rationale for the last UGB expansion effort. So that goes back to my earlier comment is the city was working on kind of a multiplicity of things. We were the, looking at urban reserve areas, we were doing an economic opportunities analysis. We were doing an urban growth boundary expansion. A lot of the things were intertwined with one another. The urban reserve area, again, it did not advance forward. The EOA got appealed and was going to get basically put back at the city from LCDC needing more work. And then the UGB was in the, the south, basically down the southeast off of the Highway 219 area. But that was where, on the previous map, that's where the resource land was at. And so in 2016, the city council at the time pulled the plug on the whole UGB stuff. We chose not to respond to the EOA and the urban reserve issues that were raised. The data information was old and outdated, really wasn't relevant anymore. And that's where we re embarked upon this process, starting in 2016 about, do we need to do an urban growth boundary expansion? That's why we've updated our EOA, Economic Opportunities Analysis, our Housing Needs Analysis and our Public Semi-Public Land Need Analysis. The mayor asked last time, what are the challenges surrounding upzoning? And there are a variety of them, of course. First of all, do you have a willing property owner who wants to upzone? We have measure 49 issues about potentially changing property and are you devaluing or modifying the value of that property? Then if you're upzoning and let's say use high density residential, you know, where do we put that? We do have a policy in our comprehensive plan that if you are annexing or if we're doing a UGB that's 15 acres or more and there's 10 net acres. I should say 15 acres net and 10% of that land has to be for high density residential. So there's already been the policy decision to kind of disperse our high density housing. But the other side of that particular coin is if you're having the high density housing, should it be approximate to services? So that people can walk and get their groceries or get other services. Transit is, some of you may remember, we updated portions of our transportation plan and our comp plan to related transit from the transit areas new plan. And of course, there are the four loops are identified in that particular plan that would provide better transit service that could help have kind of this dispersment of high density residential housing. And then there was the question about industrial land locations. So Sue, could you go to the next slide? So councillor McBride had asked me about this and so this first slide. Is a kind of a different way of showing what was inventoried in our economic opportunities analysis. So you can see towards the bottom center of the slide is the, the mill site. So that industrial there, that mixed residential, that's about 100 acres or so. We've got a three acre site off of Sandoz and Wynewski Road. And then we've got some, you know, from a two acre, three acre, you know, up to roughly a nine acre site up around the airport and that's for industrial uses. And then there's two parcels up off of Elliott. Off of Hancock that, that are vacant. Next slide. So then we go up along the railroad tracks and it was actually, there's only one vacant site and that's point three acres. It's a little hard to read, but that's down at the corner of Third or over, down by the maintenance yard. And right now it's just a vacant lot. There's nothing else that's vacant up along the railroad line. It's all developed. And then next slide. And then we got the area up around A deck. And so on the right hand side is the Springbrook District Employment, which is the industrial piece. So you've got 19 acres on the north side of the railroad tracks and 4.4 on the south side that's developable on the south side. Austin Industries offices are already there. You've got about a four acre site over on the A deck campus. And then you got a couple of one acre parcels up off of Alice Way. So really that's kind of our vacant industrial land. So again, we don't have a lot of that. And in your RCA, you know, we note that just if you, 152, 156 acres roughly of need for industrial land and then you add in the public semi-public need, that takes you up to about 165. So following the planning commissions, the city council discussion, we went to the planning commission and had a discussion with them on June 10th. And these are kind of the highlights, the feedback they gave us from about an hour and a half discussion. They indicated that there's some UGB expansion that's needed. And that applies to residential and industrial. They noted to stay out of the landslide areas that are up to the north for the residential. And then there was a question, it was kind of an interesting one. Could the city, I'm not sure this really leads to UGB, but the question was, could there be a library annexed and a post office annex over near the hospital? So if we're getting more healthcare, retirement facilities and so forth, something that's a little more proximate than downtown. Another comment from the commission was, we had had a need for a UGB expansion for a number of years. And so some of the commission members can remember back into the mid to late seventies when there was identified a need then. And here we are in 2021. One commission member indicated that if we needed to add industrial, we should add that out off the Highway 240. But again, that's where the resource land is located. So that brings a set of unique discussion points along with it. Next slide, Sue. There was an observation about adding residential land up along the Highway 240 area. And so that's where there is current exception lands, kind of just immediately north and then south of Highway 240 down across Highway 99 down to Dayton. But we have to also keep in mind that we have Chehalum Creek out there. And so when we've done some preliminary evaluations, when we were doing the simplified UGB method, there come, become some interesting infrastructure challenges with that. There was an observation, shouldn't, that we shouldn't have no industrial up in the North Hills, just because of the topography. And there was a discussion about having residential surrounding industrial where you're building in those conflicts, noise, dust, odor, clanging, banging and so forth. There was another observation about, next slide, Sue. That the North Hills could be actually difficult for housing, if you're looking at it from an affordability perspective. I can't say that I can bear that out with any facts or data at this point in time. But we have been talking a lot about affordability and we've got around a little less than 50 work items in the five year work program on housing. And so that was just a question that was brought up that would need to be looked at. The residential area east of the green, so that exception lands over off of Corral Creek was brought up. And could that potentially be a UGB expansion area? And the observations from them is, well, it appeared to be relatively proximate to water because we do have a water reservoir out there and there is sewer in the greens and there's a lift station down by the golf course. And then the next one was increasing building height. And so we were talking about, under this context, the efficiency measures. And so that's one of the things we're going to have to look at. And so in 2010, you know, we did lower or reduce our lot sizes. We went from 7,500 square feet in low density to five. We went from 5,000 in medium density down to three. We did some survey work back when we were doing the early steps in this UGB discussion. And it was not a statistically valid survey, but the feedback we got from community members was lot size was already small enough. But it came up about, well, if we're gonna, if we're toggling in our HNA is having more multifamily housing, should we actually increase the building heights? To allow, so we could get four to five floors of residential. That then brought about the discussion about, oh, then we'd have to change some of our site design standards so that they're clear and objective. So should we have more buffer areas then if it's against single family, detached single family? Or which will now include duplexes because they're considered to be basically synonymous with one another. And then we kind of had conversations about the pushback, and this kind of goes back to the mayors about the upzoning when we did Desk and Commons or we did Chehalum Point Apartments and changed and upzoned those properties that now have those apartment projects and the neighborhoods around those and the concerns that they were sharing before the planning commission. Next slide. Then we talked about downtown, though downtown is, is commercial. We are working on implementing the downtown improvement plan. But the comment was, do we need to allow a little more time to, to see those three or four story apartments? Complexes occur in the downtown. We had, we've had one that's down on Second Street. We had another project up off of Hancock, which is only a two story. But we have had inquiries primarily along Second Street about redevelopment opportunities. But we've got other challenges with the urban renewal program and utilities needing to be undergrounded and so forth for that to occur. So they were just kind of questioning, do we need to allow more time? I kind of reminded, well, we adopted that plan in 2016, we're now 2021 and we've seen one three story project so far. Then the next one, and my screen kind of went wonky, but they talked about industrial should not be next to residential. Somehow some kind of separation to mitigate potential conflicts that can occur from those two use activities. And then they talked about that medical node around Clemick. And if that urban reserve area had a particular need, you know, should it be more institutional rather than commercial? Again, no specific answers about, you know, what the right answer would be or should be. But more of their, from their perspective, thinking forward as we're going to have a growing population and aging population. And there will be a need for medical services. So that's kind of setting the recap of where we were at. In your RCA, I had outlined, you know, a number of options, things that we may want to consider. And so on the residential side, like to kind of have a dialogue with the council about just kind of some of your observations. We're not here tonight to make a decision or anything. It's more to get feedback. If you've got ideas about some efficiency measures that we may want to consider, if we were doing a UGB expansion. Last month I mentioned, we did do and added in the middle housing in that 3%, which changed our numbers a little bit and that'll be coming back to council next month for you to re-accept the HNA with that new data in it. But what kind of efficiency measures might we, or should we be considering or looking at? And then on the industrial, I think, you know, the maps I've shown you, all the data that we've collected is that we just have a deficiency. And if we need industrial, you know, where might, or where should it go? By the state's program, you know, we'd be looking at this area over towards the west off of 99 and 240 in Dayton area. And the map that we showed previously, you know, it's highly parcellized. There's lots of homes and stuff out there. And then, you know, there was what the city looked at before, which on that southeast area, which is that, that resource land. So I think I'll stop there, Mayor. I've kind of rambled on for about 25 minutes.
Oh, perfect. All right. All right, folks. Well, Doug has asked for, you know, comments, whether it's on efficiency measures or other thoughts regarding UGB and location. So let me see, hands raised and we'll, we'll go from there. Mike.
So Doug, can, can you have a UGB expansion for just industrial? Or do you have to have it for all of it, residential, light, industrial? What, so can you do that at all?
Yes, you can. My caution to the council is the city attempted that once before. And if you go back through the roughly 5,000 pages that are in the record on that one, the question came up. Well, if you need industrial land, just convert your commercial and your residential land to industrial and you should have enough. That's why we've updated all of these studies to show that we are deficient in residential. We are deficient industrial and we had an 18 acre surplus in commercial. So if you start to split it apart, my concern is somebody would say, well, just take some of your residential and turn it into industrial. Well, again, if we took some of that low density residential and turned it into industrial, we're still got a big deficit in industrial. And now we're right on the margin or we're below what we need for our single family. And so my suggestion and guidance to you is you should look at it as an entire package and not try to break it out.
Okay, so what about just looking at? I mean, if we expand, looking at the, the light industrial over off of 219 in Wynewski, the end of Wynewski over in that area. If we're going to expand or maybe have that area be light industrial because it's close to a major road where would be a good idea to try and get product out.
And there's, there's merit in that one too, councillor. Just ask everybody to keep in mind, we're not trying to identify where it should happen. It's just, you know, kind of given where we're at, and you're correct, we have industrial down in that southeast area already. And so if you were going to have future industrials, should you create that kind of clustering of that industrial area? That way you get some efficiencies in your infrastructure, transportation, sewer, water and storm drainage. We have some urban reserve there and last month we talked about, but we've got Hess Creek. And we've got a side drainage that drains into Hess Creek. So there's a lot of that urban reserve down there that's not developable. I can't give you the exact yet because we haven't done any analysis, haven't hired a consultant to go down and say, given our methodology in 1996, you know, how much of this area is not developable? That would be something we would go through if we did a UGB expansion. But there is some merit of trying to put your industrial together. But there is some merit of trying to put your industrial together. So like type of uses next to one other reduces conflicts.
All right, next, anyone? Doug, just to to follow on a little bit on that, and maybe this is the quote, you've already answered this, but you know, we've got the the urban reserve areas. And I guess we had nineteen ninety six data on what that might accommodate, but we don't have anything updated from that point, right?
Well, the urban reserves that were done back in nineteen ninety five, the the Wynuski hasn't changed, the South Springbrook hasn't changed, the Klemic hasn't changed. What has changed is where Crestview Crossing is going in, the stuff, that was an urban reserve and now that's in the process of being developed. Then if you go up on the north part of Newburgh, there was urban reserves as well. And so that's now Gracie's Landing and all of that new residential that's up there, that was in an urban reserve. And it's now finally being in an urban reserve brought into the U G B and it's now being developed. So our U R A was much bigger up on the north end of town and it's gotten smaller and smaller as it was anticipated. As the community continued to grow, those lands were brought into the U G B and developed.
But as you said, predominantly for residential.
Predominantly for residential.
Okay, other ups, other questions or comments, folks? No, okay, let's see. Just out of curiosity, the the land that the school district owns off Wilsonville, is that in the city or is that not?
No, it's way outside, way, way, way outside. If I'm just going back and looking at a map. That area that they have out there is actually classified as resource land. And it's, you know, a mile and a half or so away from maybe two miles from the U G B. So it's, it's a long ways out.
Now, I don't want to put you too much on the spot, but since you weren't around at the time. But is it your belief that that the reason it didn't pass last time is because it was focused on resource land or would that be your opinion?
I can only go from what I've read, Mayor. So in the nineteen ninety five U R A discussion is almost all of the land that was brought in for that, those U R As at that time was exception land. There was a node of resource land that was surrounded by exception was brought in. So then when they got to the two thousand five to two thousand and seven time range of looking at that U R A is in part, I think it did not was was not successful because it was including resource lands. And I mean, they they looked a mile around the cities exist, or what was at the time the city's urban growth boundary. But if you go back to that one slide that was in your, well, on the screen, wasn't in your packet, but it was in your packet from before is you start to look for the industrial land, they're looking for what's flat. And conversations with industrial developers is that they do not like to go through land assemblage, you know, buying one acre parcel and a one acre, so I can create a five acre parcel. Because they're buying houses at the same time that they have their throwaways, they're gonna tear them down. So land assemblage becomes a challenge. And so we have a lot of that issue over off our west between two forty and and down to Dayton. Roughly, then you get up north and we're going up the hills. And so it just gets steeper and steeper and steeper. There were also some issues back at that in that particular point in time about traffic. And trying to keep industrial traffic out of residential areas. So there were some says, oh, you you could maybe find some flat spots up in the North Hills U R A to expand your U G B. But then you're pushing the truck traffic down through your residential streets. But there wasn't anything specifically in the administrative rule to address that. And so now here we are today and we have phase one of the bypass constructed. In earnest discussions about phase two and three, I support phase two. So if you said, oh, well, you know, we could look over to the potentially to the west off of Highway nine up to two forty and so forth. Then you would have to ask the question of, are we pushing truck traffic right back downtown? So now downtown, we're trying to make walkable, pedestrian friendly, road diet, all those things are in the downtown plan. And we just pushed the traffic, truck traffic back into downtown again. And so then, you know, what was the investment of a couple hundred million dollars plus to build phase one of the bypass? And so those are the tensions that are there and they're not always clear how you weave those in and do the analysis in a U G B expansion. That's why we hire consultants to help us figure through all of those policy choices. So those are the kinds of things that keep me up at night is if you, as I always say, it's like being on a stage and you're the stagehand. And you're, you're running all the levers for the curtains to go up and down and trying to remember all of the sequencing. And if you pull this lever, what are the consequences over here on your left hand? You pull the left hand and the third one over and you pull that one up. Now did the wrong curtain go up or the right curtain go down? And so it's, it's difficult. I admittedly, it is difficult.
From what you, what you said on industrial and this, this, this may be something that people don't, aren't used to me saying. But the other thing is that industrial land, while flat, is also very easy to build houses on. So we, we need to be careful not to let it get picked up by housing. But anyway, Mike.
So the, the idea of maybe going four and five stories high. I don't necessarily like that idea, although I guess if if we were to change the coding that would allow that. I guess the market would would show whether that is viable or not, whether people like that. Or would it make it more difficult because we'd have to be doing something to, so that you're not blocking views of other homes or something. Would that, is that kind of what you're
Well, the planning commission was asking the questions is if we were to use our land more efficiently than what we're using it today, could you increase structure height? So if you go back to our conversation in the ordinance you adopted on duplexes, we left all the structure height the same and low density. We did increase it by five feet in medium density and high density to accommodate duplexes, which will, when we deal with the other middle housing. And play into that as well. So part of the planning commission conversation was if you increase the structure heights, you can get more units per acre. So you're using your land more efficiently. But then that leads to how do you make the transition to existing development that may be around it? Because if you have single family homes, are they gonna want to look at a four or five story building? Because, you know, we get the comments at staff level of, well, now they're looking into my backyard. And it's like, yes, we understand, we we hear what you're saying. Then the planning commission also got into the discussion, well, if you're adding more units, then you've got more parking. So are the sites that we have big enough to accommodate another floor or another floor? And to be able to provide the necessary parking, which then leads to conversation, should we change our parking regulations and require less parking? Then if you're requiring less parking, then do you need to have a more robust transit system? To be able to move so people can get around because not everybody has a car. But then if you don't have enough parking on a multifamily project, then we get the comments that they're now spilling over into the neighborhood. And they're parking on the street and they're parking in front of my house. And often I say, but it's a public street and anybody can park. It's a public street. But, you know, people have a vested interest in that space that may be fifty or seventy five feet long in front of their house for them and their guests and so forth to be able to park. So all of these things, council, all start to play together. So the planning commission didn't get down to any decisions, but they started to raise the questions. If we did look at an efficiency measure like that, what are some of the pros and the cons associated with it?
All right, other comments, folks? Do, do you like the idea of a medical campus expansion there around climate, like you said? I think seeing the expansion that's been going on, I think that would be certainly reasonable, but yeah, but others, otherwise this is a complicated puzzle. And now that you're talking about building heights, it's really going to three D puzzles now. So there you go.
It's a live long and prosper moment.
Yes, it is.
Well, again, so we want to have these conversations. We're gonna come back again in July. So I really encourage council members, if you have thoughts and ideas over the course of the next two weeks. Please send me an email and I'm cataloging all of this. Probably go back to the planning commission again and we'll talk a little bit more about efficiency measures that might be considered. You know, if we go back to our housing work program, we have a lot, you know, a little less than fifty items identified there and some of those are gonna come up. I'm also applying, you have it on your agenda tonight, a resolution. Apply for a housing production strategy, which may give us further information about how do we address the housing needs within Newburgh. We already have some measures that are already identified in our H N A. So if you go to the strategy section, that was a companion document, I'll call it volume one, which the H N A, volume two was the housing strategy. There are some ideas there. Take a read through that again. It's available online on the planning webpage and you can take a look at it. But that might spark some creative ideas or some suggestions of how we might deal with some of the efficiency issues. I think when we look at the issue of residential, there may be some efficiency things that we could look at. That may say, well, we, we don't, you know, need eighty acres of U G B expansion for residential because we're gonna consider doing these other things. I think the industrial from my catbird seat is we're just deficient. And and the question is, do we initiate a U G B for that component, not singularly, but with the other portions? And say, if we're gonna, if we need a hundred and sixty five acres, you know, that U G B process will help us work through, where would it go? Because again, we're not predetermining where it's gonna go, but it, that process will help us determine where it would go. And then it's gonna bring in all the things I was mentioning tonight about truck traffic and volumes and downtown and livability and walkability. And all of those things are gonna come into play.
All right, Mike, do you have another comment?
Yeah, one, one last one. So you mentioned a consultant. Now, if we were to hire a consultant, I'm assuming they would have the expertise to be able to look at this community, look at the maps that that you have shown us and be able to give us some really good information from their point of view, what they think would be good. I mean, sometimes for me looking at all this, it just kind of goes, oh, wow. I mean, there's, there's a lot to this. And so would a consultant be able to help us? And then I'm assuming they'd also be able to help us do this U G B and approximately, what would that even cost? I mean, do you have kind of a ballpark figure what that might cost us?
Well, in the budget that was adopted for twenty one, twenty two, we've identified three hundred thousand dollars of consultant services to address an urban growth boundary expansion. And I can say that maybe that's the starting point. There are communities that have spent, you know, well over a million dollars going through U G B expansion analysis. Other communities, you know, smaller may have spent less. But I've talked with consultants, you know, to get us started, you know, what do we think we might need in that first year, year and a half? And that's the number that I ended up with to get us started. Because we're also, counselor, when we do this, is there, it's a very lockstep process. It's called, it's or you administrate rule, division twenty four. And so it's very prescribed and what we have to go through, what the consultants would analyze and look at. But there's a subset of all of that is that once you start to hone in where, you know, the U G B might occur and so forth. We have to hire environmental consultants to look at these stream corridors and figure out, okay, based upon our existing methodology, how much of that area is actually not buildable? So you may say, you know, I'll throw a number out, just an arbitrary number, you know, we needed eighty acres of residential, but it's got two stream corridors. Well, that's not eighty acres. We're gonna need something more than that because the stream corridor has basically become a protected gold five resource and we're not gonna impact and build on them. So we start to get down to that level of analysis.
All right, other comments or or questions, folks? All right, all right. Well, I think I've got according to seven. So at this point, we can either maybe ask Dan if he wants to provide the city managers report or we can come back at seven o'clock. So it's your pleasure, counsel and Dan. Oh, sorry, Elise.
Hi, thanks for the presentation, Doug. Always, always awesome. I wanted to just bring up too, to see if there would be a point in upcoming meeting that we could get on the agenda to discuss council rules at length. I think it's been a while since we've gone over them. And then also with new counselors, I think it would be helpful to have a full discussion of the council rules to see if there's any additions or revisions that we need to make.
How do you all feel? We'll get, so we can give staff an indication whether we think that's something you want to do. How's about a thumbs up, thumb down sort of? Yeah, everybody, council rules. Okay, looks like, yep, looks like we got it. Okay, so there we go. Thank you all. Any, anything else? All right, then what do you think about cities managers reporter? Do we save that for the business meeting?
I think I can be quick. It's up to you, though.
Right, there we go. All right, Dan can be quick. So here we go.
Okay, just gonna skip past COVID if I can. And just suffice to say that we were planning for COVID being over at this point. So who who would have thunk it only a year and a half later? Other items, just want to call your attention and the community's attention to this couple of items on our website. One, we posted today a video and some additional information about the candidates for our police chief search. And we'll interview those candidates next Monday on the twenty eighth. There are four folks varying experiences, including one of our own. And, you know, tried to provide with COVID, I guess I'll go back to COVID unfortunately. But with COVID, we're limited on the space that we can have for actual interviews in terms of how many people can be in a room and all those kinds of things still. So rather than being able to provide a meet and greet, a community opportunity for folks to actually get to know these individuals in person. We're not able to do that. And so we provided a video of their answering about five questions each. Just as some way for folks to see them, see them talk, think, all those sorts of things. And so hopefully folks will listen, watch the video. It's a little long. It's about an hour fifteen minutes, but you can pause it and there's all kinds of things, get your popcorn. But it's, I think it's, it's a pretty informative look at all the finalists. And, you know, I'm just grateful to all four of them for participating in that. And, you know, again, wanted to provide some level of, I guess, a view into who these people are for the the community that is, I I know, very interested in the process and in the outcome of the process. Just a little bit more detail about that, the plan right now is essentially for folks who are interested in how we will interview. Since there are, surprise, surprise, there are folks that are interested in in the process. I appreciate that, actually. But we've got three panels. There'll be a panel of department heads, so folks who are their peers of this position. Panel of the representatives of the the police department of the, of our police department. So folks who are subject matter experts, not just of policing, but of the community and community policing in Newburgh and Dundee. And then a group of community members as well. And so in trying to select community members, we we've looked to some of our boards and commissions, some of our existing volunteers and leaned on them again. And so I've got a group of of those folks who are willing to to take up the the day and and do the interviews and grateful in advance for their time. And then I, as as folks, I think know, I'll, I'll And then I, as, as folks, I think know, I'll, I'll make the final decision on, on the police chief and we'll post that information as well. So that process is near its conclusion and we've got a bunch of information and that has actually also been translated into Spanish. And so our Latinx community members can, we both watched the video and participated in some of the, the process that's remaining. Other item that is on our website, which is not police related, just in FYI, I know for some who are paying attention or have heard rumor, there's a chlorine shortage in the area, a regional chlorine shortage, which has caused some of the water agencies in the region to encourage folks to conserve water because they, they use the chlorine to treat the water to make it more drinkable or at all drinkable. And if there's not chlorine, it's real tough to provide safe water. And so there may be boil orders and things like that if there is a shortage ultimately. And, and that's an if statement. I just wanna share that we produce our cleaning supply differently. And so we use a different process. In essence, we generate our own sodium hypochlorite. Get that technical thing hopefully correct. And if not, I'm sure Public Works can shame me later. And we do that from a salt brine solution and there's not a shortage on that. So we do not anticipate being affected by the shortage on chlorine, but just wanna let folks know that we would regardless, of course, let you all know if you needed to boil water or anything like that. And we're actually in the process of upgrading our emergency alert system to Everbridge. And so we would probably end up using that along with our social media and all those kinds of places to post information. But I will tag on to that whole statement, the idea of water conservation is still something we would encourage. And so even if there is not a shortage, just in keeping with the summer of sustainability that we have information out on in social media, just it would encourage folks to look into ways that they can do water conservation activities at home. And so my plug for summer of sustainability while I talk about chlorine, who, who would have bought it? Just one more thing, and I'll leave this actually at a relatively high level because I believe either of a couple of counselors might want to speak to it. But a labor of love that has sort of finally, I think, come to the point with COVID being a little bit further resolved. We've been working on a, a community court concept and really looking at a way to do diversion of folks who are in noncriminal or a noncriminal diversion for folks who are facing lesser charges, I should say. And so, you know, things like low level that are predicated in other behaviors or other issues, trying to connect those folks with resources, nonprofit resources primarily, but resources in the community that hopefully can start to, to get in and, and break the cycle of, of that behavior or of the, the issues that are sort of driving some of their, their behaviors. And so that community court, first court is June 29th. So that's next Tuesday, knock wood. And it's been a while in, incoming, I think, because of the restrictions on being able to gather in person, we've not been able to do community court, even though we've sort of been ready to do it, but wanna give Judge Blake a huge amount of credit on that and not trying to steal his thunder, but trying to promote his, his event. So I just wanna mention that for folks, and I, I believe there's been some back and forth about that on social media that I've seen. One other item, recruitments, I think we're seeing what seems to be continued kind of wave and you know, both separations for folks looking for other jobs, retiring, you know, all kinds of reasons. But we're in the midst of what I think is, is going on in a lot of agencies, a lot of companies, all kinds of reasons. And I'm sure COVID is a big driver of a lot of the turnover, but we're seeing a lot of recruitment. So just, you'll see a lot of activity. We've got 16 recruitments active or planned for the next few months. And, you know, definitely mindful of the disruption of that and the need for some folks to, in some cases, either pick up, you know, pick up additional duties or, you know, that we're essentially kind of stalled out in place on certain projects, unfortunately, because of a loss of, of staff. So doing what we can to both plug the holes and to, to kind of take care of our staff. And, and it's just, I think, kind of how things are right now, we're, we're seeing a lot of recruitments across the region as well. So just wanna keep that in the forefront. I mentioned earlier that I, I met with the Johnsons on site, and I think we've still gotta work out some options, some additional options for them that I appreciate. You know, Counselor McBride bringing that up before, just say that we're continuing to, to look for some ideas. I met with Dave Hogelberg with the bypass, the Parkway Committee, and so got, got caught up a little bit on that, which I'm appreciative of. I think he's, and if he's optimistic, I'm optimistic, but optimistic about some funding from the feds. And we talked a little bit about some options locally for funding. And then riding shotgun with Mr. Rux on some of our Urban Renewal Authority presentations, we presented, or he presented. I, I can say I watched him present to the county commissioners last week, and we've got a return engagement for the county commissioners this week. And so talked to TBFNR and NCPRD and all kinds of other folks in the next 45 days as we kind of get through all of that. And, you know, I think honestly, so far, so good. It's been good questions, you know, some challenging questions, but good questions from, from the county so far. And I would anticipate from others as well, but, you know, just appreciative of the fact that, you know, this is a process. I'm hoping that we're near the end of, but, you know, it's a process that has been thoughtful and, and I think we've got good, good answers for a lot of those tough questions. I think lastly, just wanna mention that we do have, in addition to the video for the police chief candidates, we've got another video, which is a three minute video of STCs. And so those system development charges, we've got a short video trying to explain as quickly as and concisely as possible what the, a complex topic. But also looking for feedback from residents and folks about STCs and how we might be able to tweak those and looking to bring that, those comments and some of the feedback back to you all in early August. So still looking for input from, from people. I'll say so far, there's been, I think about 15, excuse me, about 15 responses and, and we're pretty much across the board, everything, you know, in equal measure. And so there's no definitive, yes, this is the solution, which probably does not surprise those who've touched STCs. There's no easy answer there. So staff is also looking at some options that we will probably recommend in addition to the community input. But just wanted to give you the quick update on that. And that's it. Under, under time.
Nice, nice. All right, questions or comments for Dan? All right. All right. Well, Dan, thank you. Thank you so much for that, for that update. All right. I've got a couple of minutes to seven with how you feel about 7:05. Bryce, do you have a comment? I'm sorry.
Yeah, actually, real quick, I noticed Denise's shirt and so I had to like Google it, like what has got food? And it's dope. Denise, do you want to share what that is for folks listening or watching? You're still muted, so yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's a, it's a Y cap shirt for their food bank.
Yep. And I guess there's also like a larger national movement where folks can get an app to locate local areas where there are food banks and other, and other meals. So for folks watching who experience food insecurity or know others, that may be a direction to, to send folks. Good work, Denise.
Oops. Any, good stuff. Any, anything else? All right. How do you feel about 10 minute break, five minute break? Let's go five minutes. We'll, we've got people waiting. So let's go 7:05, we'll be back. All right. Thank you all. We're a little few ticks after, but why don't we call to the order of the city council business session for June 21st, 2021. This is also being recorded. You can see it on Zoom or you can join by phone. So we also have the agenda in Spanish. So if we could, please call the meeting to order and a roll call, please.
Can you hear me? Okay. I just got a little message saying my microphone wasn't working. Yes. Okay. Thanks, Bryce. Counselor McBride. Counselor Cofield. Councilor Anell Holloman. Counselor Martinez Plancarte.
Here.
Mayor Rogers.
Here.
Counselor Bacon.
Here.
And Counselor Finley is absent tonight.
All righty then, thank you. And now let's move to the pledge of allegiance, please. See my flag. There we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. All right. First item on our, we, for those who are just tuning in, we did hear the city managers' report earlier during our work session and I, it will be posted online as well. So you can, you can see it there. So moving on to item 5A of the agenda, council committee appoint, or we have committee appointments. If I can get to it. All right. And so the appointed recommendation is Timo, these are reappointments. Tim O'Leary to the Library Board for a term July 1, 2021 to July 30, 2025. Ron Sinicky to the Citizens Rate Review Commission for a term July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2024. And another reappointment, Casker Zook to the Traffic Safety Commission. He's a student commissioner for the term of June 2021 to May 2022. May 2022, I guess that would mean. All right. And then in addition, we have appointments. Charles Watson to the Store of Preservation Commission for a term of July 1, 2021 to December 30th, 2022. He will fill the remainder of Barbara Doyle's term as she resigned in 2020. Thank you, Barbara. And then Britta, Britta Stewart as an alternate in the case of a future vacancy on the commission. Sean Kelso to the Citizens Rate Review Commission to fill the remainder of the term for Bill Rourke, who resigned on June 1st, 2021. And that term is July 1st, 2021 to June 30, 2022. Thank you, Bill. Jennifer Bean and Melanie Mildenberger to the Citizens Rate Review Commission for the terms July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2024 to fill the positions of Nick Morais and Adam Lundstrom, who did not renew. And thank you to both Nick and to Adam. All right. So counselors, those are the proposed appointments. I will entertain a motion if you are so inclined.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the appointments as stated.
Okay, thanks.
Again.
And Jules with a second. Denise with a motion, Jules with a second. All right. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor signify by raising your left hands. And it looks like we're unanimous there, Sue. Thank you. All right. And thank you. And thank you for those who are willing to serve the city. That is very generous to devote your time to this type of work. So, so thank you. All right. Now let's move on to public comments, section six. I think we've got a couple of people signed up this evening. And while we bring people into the meeting, let me review some of the council goals regarding, or, and the, sorry, council rules regarding public comments. So, and I will read this again, it comes directly from council rules. Public comments, non-agenda items and consent calendar, which is what we'll be talking about at this point. Person speaking to the council from the floor concerning items not on the agenda or items that are the consent calendar would speak under public comments. These people will be given the opportunity to speak no more than five minutes. Speakers may share their time at the discretion of the mayor. The maximum time allowed for public comments, including all speakers, is 30 minutes. The mayor has a discretion to extend these time limits. So there you go. That is the basic thing. I think we've got five people, so we'll be getting very close to the 30 minute limit this evening. One, one other thing that I'd like to mention is the guy, in the guide to speaking before council and City Attorney Walker mentioned this as well, that comments are to be directed or questioned to the council through the mayor. And please keep in mind that public comment is not a forum for public debate. So there you are. And I think, given that, I think, if I can find my list.
John Peterson is.
John Peterson.
So hang on a sec, because I can't promote him while I have timer tools up. So I'll take care of him first. Okay. And I promoted him, but I'm not seeing him.
Yeah, I think he's here.
There he is. Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Peterson. Good evening. You're here for public comments and we are here to listen.
Great. So whatever you just did, took my screen away here.
I think, sorry, I think we just put up a timer for, for the five minutes.
Can we minimize that so we can look at our notes that are on our computer?
You can try clicking escape. Sometimes it'll go to automatic fullscreen. If you click escape, you might be able to get back.
Okay, I'm ready. My name is John Peterson, owner of Pollinate Flowers, a regenerative cut flower farm in the Dundee Hills with a small flower shop located in downtown Newburgh. My husband Jeremy and I moved here in 2012 and have absolutely loved it. In 2019, we began a campaign donating pride flags to local businesses willing to apply them for Pride Month as a signal to local queer community that there are safe spaces and accepting neighbors in Yamhill County. The response has been so tremendous that just a couple of years later, we are working with a diverse group of humans, developing a model to build rural queer awareness, visibility, support and community called Wine Country Pride. Writing this, I realized it's impossible to talk about all that should be said in the five minutes I am allowed to speak. I could spend the five minutes discussing my childhood in Montana. The neighborhood boys who quickly picked up on my differences and relentlessly harassed me with names and jokes. For 30 years, I have dealt with homophobic bullies. I could talk about how I packed every single thing I owned up into my car as soon as I was old enough and ran away to Portland. How my parents wondered if they would ever see me again. How when I got to Portland, I had so much internalized homophobia that the first time I saw two guys holding hands downtown, I was mad at them for displaying their gayness so publicly. I could spend five minutes talking about how that trauma impacted and continues to impact my mental and physical health. I could talk about the risks I took to find validation and approval. I could talk about the sense of feeling like I don't have a place in society and how that feeling has too often been escaped with drugs, alcohol, partying and sex. I wish I had time to talk about how escapism and addiction put so many bright humans on a dark pathway, sometimes for life, costing the government millions. I could spend hours telling you the stories about Jeremy and I's 12 years building a life, a farm and a business together. How I have never felt so accepted by another human, how he holds me when I am vulnerable and lets me comfort him whenever he needs reassurance. Instead, I am here to speak out against Counselor Mike McBride's homophobic behavior at the last council meeting. If there was more time, we'd talk about how Mike's declaration that it is discriminatory to raise one group over another is a homophobic dog whistle, coded political speech that is designed to show support to other homophobes without provoking opposition. Many dog whistles have been used against queer humans, including that we are perverts, pedophiles, mentally ill and diseased. I'd mentioned that Mike didn't protest February's Black History Month proclamation, how he could have just rolled his eyes about the pride proclamation and kept quiet. No vote was required. About how his behavior is the exact same as the homophobic bullies from my childhood. I'd love to chat about Mike's freedom of religion to believe whatever he wants in his church, home and heart. And then we'll talk about my freedom of religion to live free of government sponsored persecution and bigotry. We could talk about the value that human diversity brings to a community. We could talk about how we hired four people during a pandemic and how we create living wage jobs here in Yamhill County. I wish we could celebrate this month, our businesses representing Newburgh in a nationally syndicated magazine called Naturally with Danny Seo. Currently, Mike is in the news representing Newburgh as a homophobe. I could talk about the many positive stories we have heard from members of the community who are thankful and excited we are developing Wine Country Pride, the lives that have already changed for the better, the teenagers who felt safe to come out. We should spend way more than five minutes talking about how Mike demanded to go on record as against this. Mike demanded to go on record against a proclamation recognizing, quote, "the struggle for dignity and equality for LGBTQ people" against doing the work to, quote, "extend the promise of our country to every person," against, quote, "encouraging all community members to eliminate prejudice wherever it exists." Mike is against, quote, "celebrating our great diversity by taking part in community events throughout June, which focus on and celebrate our LGBTQ neighbors." That is really unfortunate because we have created an amazing event called the Rainbow Quest, 29 local businesses selling pride inspired drinks, raising money for local LGBTQ youth and programs. We have heard from multiple participating businesses, they have sold large number of beverages for the cause, driving some tens of thousands of dollars directly into the pockets of local businesses who are just beginning to recover from COVID. Mike demanded to go on record against each one of these businesses, including six of them right here in Newburgh and major Yamhill County wineries like Stoller and R Stewart. Mike is against the potential opportunity to turn Wine Country Pride into a major economic and cultural event for our area, the potential to market our valley as a welcoming and inclusive place to queer humans around the world. There are entire travel companies dedicated to queer friendly travel destinations in our entire county. Every winery, every small business that caters to tourists could benefit from Wine Country Pride. The city council has a decision to make. Censure is an option for Censure is an option for city councillors who have broken code of conduct rules. Mike has broken several and has many more years left in his term. Whether you choose to censure or not, the city council will be making a statement about homophobia in the Newburgh city government. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Peterson, thank you. Next, I think on my list is Rachel Adams.
Okay, I just promoted.
I see, it looks like she may be waiting to be promoted.
Yeah, I did promote her.
There we go.
I'm, I'm slow.
No, no worries. Good evening, Ms. Adams.
Hello. First, I want to start by thanking Jeremy for his incredible and, and accurate and well-researched and passionate testimony. My name is Rachel Adams. I am a local Newburgh resident. I am a small business owner. And I run a nonprofit organization for wineries in the area to work towards greater equity and inclusion in our state's wine industry. And I'm also gay, and my wife and I have lived in Newburgh for over five years. We certainly intend to have children here and to raise our children in this community. And I was absolutely appalled at last week's meeting by councilman Mike McBride's response to the proclamation made by Remy Drabkin, a friend and an incredible mentor and colleague and leader in our community, that he needed to stop the meeting and go on record as being against this proclamation. I'm not sure if the council is aware, but there have been quite a few incidences in the last few weeks in Yamhill County of hate and discrimination and violence against the queer community. There have been swastikas on buildings and personal property of folks that have hung and flown the, the beautiful pride flags that the folks at Pollinate and Wine Country Pride have so generously given to our community. Harvest Fresh Grocery Store in McMinnville had a, a window broken and a ball gag was found in the mail slot of their, of their business because of their visible pride flag. And here in Newburgh, just a few months ago, the Newburgh High School staff approved a poster that was going to be used by the Gay Straight Alliance, or LGBTQIA identified students on behalf of them to educate their peers after a survey was done on bullying and harassment. And those students who identified as LGBTQIA reported much higher instances of abuse, of harassment, and of bullying at their school. The administration approved a factual poster, sent it to the local Allegra print shop, and the Allegra print shop informed the high school administrators that they would be refusing the job because of personal beliefs. They said that they found the content offensive, especially the fact that it addressed non-binary and, and genders, other, gender expressions other than, you know, male and female. These are real things that are happening in our community, and these are not just words, these are not just thoughts. Words, we know, influence action. And this is not, flying a pride flag is not just symbolic, it is an action that so many businesses in our community are taking to show support for my family, to show support for my business. And to, to see councillor Mike McBride's response and, and incredible privilege needing to halt last week's meeting to let, you know, the Newburgh community know about his, his bigotry was, was really appalling. I also want to take this moment to deeply thank Mayor Rick Rogers for speaking up. It is not an easy thing to do, to find your voice in times of oppression and discrimination. And you did that for us, and I was screaming and cheering in my house when, when, when the mayor said, you know what, no, I can't leave this. We can't leave this, we can't make this okay, and I a hundred percent support Jeremy's request to consider censure. And I hope that the rest of, of the council will as well. Newburgh is, is a growing place that is becoming more diverse all the time. And we need to do everything that we can together to make sure that this community is safe and is accessible and is welcoming to all. Thank you.
All right, Rachel, thank you, thank you for your time. Next on my list, I believe, is Jeremy Carroll.
Thank you, I don't think so. My friends are about to.
Ready.
Rachel, real quick, I don't think you're muted, which is okay, as long as you.
My wife's.
All right. Hello, my name is Jeremy Carroll. I also own and operate Pollinate Flowers, which is a specialty cut flower farm located in Dundee and a floral boutique located in downtown Newburgh. I have lived and worked in this community for nine years. I'm a fully adjusted almost forty-year-old in a twelve-year homosexual relationship who has so much love and support from my friends and family. Yet last year, when I saw that Newburgh, for the first time in its history, recognized June as Pride Month, I was moved to tears. I have never been part of a community that publicly acknowledged my existence, my fear to be myself, or be affectionate with my husband in public. We live in a time where old ideas are slowly slipping away. For example, we now know that homosexuality is not a mental disorder. The cause of the high rate of mental illness in the gay community is not because of being gay, but because of the cloud of fear and hate that attitudes like councillor McBride continue to perpetuate. In Newburgh's very own community, just before we moved to the area, there was a raft of teen suicides, many of whom identified as LGBTQ persons. These kids died because of the repressive religious and social views that many in this community have historically and currently espoused. In a recent statement defending the placement of BLM posters by some teachers at Dundee Elementary School, Principal Reed Langdon said, quote, "At recess when a student is hurt, staff rush to help. We do the same when members of our community are hurting. I see all of the students at recess, but if one of them is hurt, that is where my focus goes, and at that moment, that is all I see. Once I know that the student is okay, then I can zoom back out and look at everyone." Pride Month memorializes the Stonewall riots when the queer patrons at the Stonewall Inn and Bar in New York were raided by the police and arrested simply for fraternizing together. They rioted because they were fed up with the continued tyranny and harassment that white Christian power structures had placed on them while they were simply trying to exist. Somehow, their simple existence was offensive then, and to councillor McBride, apparently still is offensive. This is a community of humans in our towns and cities around the country that are afraid to outwardly be themselves because they fear violence against them, being disowned, or in fifteen states can be evicted or fired because of who they love. Pride is about telling this community of humans that they matter, that there are people who care about them, and that they should celebrate who they are. Newburgh's Pride Proclamation did just that. It acknowledged the historic struggles of the LGBTQ community, called for an end of discrimination from creating, and for creating a community where all are welcome and can thrive and live up to their fullest potential. To again quote Principal Langdon, "At recess when, when a student is hurt, staff rush to help. We do the same when members of our community are hurting." The LGBTQ community is literally dying. They are crying for our help, for love, for compassion, and for validation. The proclamation is a Band-Aid on a gaping wound, and councillor McBride proudly has gone on the record as being against it. In fact, he takes pride in keeping the wound festering. He bemoans the political correctness of this day and age, a time when you cannot freely spew hate speech without those who are affected by it pushing back. The First Amendment does not protect all speech. It is not a carte blanche to say whatever you feel without fear of reprisal. In fact, there are strict limitations on free speech. It is a gross misreading of the Constitution and the rule of law, and it is used to justify hate. Thankfully, in Oregon, hate speech has been added to a list that is not allowed. This last Friday, on our way to meet with Congresswoman Susan Bonamici to talk about our efforts with Wine Country Pride, I saw a truck driving down Highway ninety-nine with a Confederate flag and a Nazi flag flying, flying in the wind. These kind of people often, like councillor McBride, bemoan the loss of our free speech and the political correctness that keeps them from speaking their belief that they are superior to other minorities and from using racial slurs and ethnic and bigoted slurs. Are these the kind of people the councillor wants to be associated with? His statement against this proclamation puts him in league with them. But instead of dealing with the fallout from the position he has staked out, he would rather, as stated in an email to a constituent, talk about the fiscal issues that the town is facing. I am here to tell you that bigotry has fiscal consequences. When people outside this community won't come to Newburgh because they feel like they don't, or that their friends or family members won't be comfortable, welcome, or safe here, that has real financial implications for their local economy. We are in the middle of creating Wine Country Pride, which we hope to continue to grow in the coming years into a marketable event that has a potential to draw hundreds of people, both gay and straight, to this area from around the country. This will bring a huge fiscal windfall to the community, but it will not happen if there's not public review against the veiled bigotry councillor McBride proudly wears. If we, as a community, want to continue to prosper and grow, inclusivity must be our future. If we continue to cling to old ideas and look at the past, the world will pass us by and Newburgh will be left behind. I strongly urge the council to show solidarity with the LGBTQ community, stand behind their proclamation of ending prejudice wherever it exists by censuring councillor McBride. Show the community that we are moving forward towards a more inclusive future and leave bigotry in the past where it belongs. And by the way, Mike, there already is Christian Heritage Month. It is called December.
Jeremy, thank you. Let's see, next on my list, Zachary Goff, please. Good evening, Zachary, you are on when you're ready.
No, he, I'm not seeing him on the attendee side. I'm not seeing Zach.
Zach, I think you're, Zach Goff, there he is, I think.
Okay, all right, great, thank you.
Floor is yours.
All right. As a member of this community and the LGBTQ community, I feel that I have a need to speak up on the subject of councillor McBride's homophobia and bigotry as well. I'm relatively new here. I moved here about four years ago, and to be honest, as a gay Jewish multiracial person, I was quite nervous. I knew almost nothing of the area, however, I had heard horror stories about Newburgh's reputation, about the extremist politics, about the religious zealotry, about the rampant racism and the hatred of homosexuals in this area. When I moved here, I, for the first time since high school, found myself very conscious of what I was wearing, how I sounded, and even the way I walked down the street. I was nervous to meet new people, to be in round new people and networking events, not knowing if they were repulsed by my presence, constantly wondering if I was even a human to them. And as you can imagine, and maybe you can't, that is not a good feeling. It's a total regression away from everything that I've worked for towards accepting myself and moving myself into a happy, loving, and positive lifestyle. And luckily, over the past four years, I have learned that that reputation that Newburgh has is actually unwarranted and completely unfair. It's a reputation that only stems from the old ways of thinking, the ways of thinking that do not represent the majority of the population, the, and the old regimes that tried their hardest to stop change and to keep outsiders like me out. Unfortunately, you, Mr. McBride, are part of that old regime and old way of thinking. And your words and actions only perpetuate the reputation placed upon this town and keep it alive, which hurts this community and so many people in it, and will only cause the slow death of the economy in this town. Because whether you want to believe it or not, the social issues and the economic issues are connected. So now I just want to touch on a few things that you've said over the past couple of weeks that have made me feel the need to speak up, as I'm not someone who normally does. One, a proclamation of Pride Month has never been and never will be about raising one group above another. It's a meager acknowledgement of a past and present of a deeply marginalized group of people in this country. I don't have time to go into a whole history lesson on it, but I suggest all of you guys educate yourself on, on LGBTQIA history. Two, you did state in an email that was then posted on Facebook that being gay is a lifestyle choice. It's a, it's a claim that I've heard my entire life, and it's absolutely ridiculous. Have you ever, have you ever questioned why anyone would make the choice to put a target on their back in order to be marginalized, discriminated against, or live in constant fear of who they are? The only choice I see here is the choice that you made to judge others and for something, for something that has no effect on you or your person, and the choice to partake in and normalize discrimination. Three, in that same email, you feel that you are being bullied for your opinion. In the real world, a bully does not get to rally for sympathy when the victim stands up for themselves. Mike McBride, you are a bully. And by denouncing the proclamation, you are completely unprovoked, and with, and even after having told you have no say in the matter, you became the bully. Four, in the Newburgh Graphic article, and this isn't about the LGBTQ, but in the Newburgh Graphic article published today, you were quoted saying that this is a Christian nation founded on Christian principles. And as a non-Christian citizen of this country, this is highly offensive. And if you were to leave your bubble and you, you would absolutely know that this is not a Christian nation. Not a Christian state and not a Christian town. If you even, and, and you even called for a Christian Heritage Month and a German Heritage Month. And I'm not going to say the word, but I hope you understand, and I hope everyone understands and can guess exactly what that sounds like when you say it. And five, and this one's just a quote from Mr. McBride, and it's pretty self-explanatory, but it's important. I don't care if someone says I'm discriminatory, that's okay. And I would go on, I don't have time, I'm just asking that the Newburgh City Council make a collective demand to publicly apologize to the LGBT community and vote to censure councillor McBride. He has really created a sense of fear to the LGBTQ, LGBTQ community and promoted bigotry and discrimination and is a terrible representation of this city and this council and this town. Thank you.
Thank you, Zach. Let's see, is Mark Greier on the line? Sue, I think he's the last.
I'm not, I'm not seeing him.
Okay, I, I'm not sure that he, my guess is that he is not here to speak on the same subject. Okay, and if he comes on, we can, we can get back to him before I close public comment. I'd like to make just a couple of quick comments regarding what we just heard. First off, the, the proclamation, as you know, was read and it was entered into the public record. I'd also like to point out that council goal number two seeks to foster an atmosphere that includes diversity, equity, and inclusion in our community. On the question of censure, this, normally I don't, but I'm going to at this point defer to, not that I don't normally defer to, to the city attorney, but I'm going to, for his opinion on censure, and James, if you don't mind.
Sure, thank you, Mayor Rogers, and direct this to you, or to the council, but through you, Mayor Rogers. Just so that everyone is on the same page, censure is discussed in section eight point five of the council's rules. And it is a potential response to instances where there are violations of council rules, city ordinances, city charter, or state law. I, I want to be very clear with the council that censure is a remedy that is intended to be applied very narrowly and in a very narrow number of instances. One, you need that violation of, of authority, whether it's the council rules or state law or city charter or city ordinances. And two, it's, it's got to be a necessity to protect the integrity of the council. And so the language is intentionally narrow in the rules, but I would also add that it's, it's, it's a narrow remedy with respect to how it's implemented for, for a couple of reasons that are important from the city attorney's office. One is because we want to be sure that censure is not used as a, as a, in place of or as an overstep for other tools or remedies that may be available. One is we don't want to, to, to overstep necessarily the voice of the electorate. Two is we don't want it to overstep other, other tools. Two is we don't want it to overstep other, other tools like individual counselors being able to, to share their voice or their opinion as individual council members. Another, I guess, tool that's, that's used that we don't want censure to overstep is just the council being able to vote on particular matters to show their position on behalf of the city. So there's a number of tools in this toolkit. Censure is, is a tool, but it's probably the narrowest of, of, of those that can be applied. And the second reason that it's applied narrowly is because of, of the exposure for the city. I won't get into, to details on that. We can talk further about it in, in a separate session, but we want to be, want it to be narrowly applied because it is, it is the remedy that creates the most exposure for the city because of the, the action that the governing body would be, would be taking in response to a particular event or circumstance. So I wanted to make sure that we, that we all had an understanding of what, what censure is, where it is in the rules, how it's typically applied. Of course, if there are questions from the, from the counselors, I'm, I'm here and available to, to, to answer those or respond to those. But we want to be, we want to be very, very careful in any sort of censure application.
Thank you. Any questions for James, folks? All right, go ahead, Elise.
I guess my overall question for James is at what point, I think as Mike would say, his personal freedoms, freedom of speech cross the line of public, of fear of public safety for community groups within Newburgh. After hearing that, those three testimonies, I feel even stronger that his words have caused a, an outcry from people that have the courage to speak right now. So and I think it does warrant, I mean, I'm looking at the council goals, you know, rule four seven, rule four eight. I do feel like the dignity of the office and representation of the city was breached in his comments to the graphic. So I think even a non-progressive knows what a German Heritage Month implies. And that is an outward dog whistle.
Yeah, let me, if, if I could just share a couple of, of thoughts on the First Amendment component. As we all know, the First Amendment right to free speech is aggressively protected under the federal and state constitution. Typically, you know, there are exceptions to that. As Counselor Yarno Holloman, you've pointed out, the classic example that's often pointed out in case law is yelling fire in a movie theater, something that's going to immediately endanger the public. Typically, when it's been, when, when those exceptions have been analyzed or evaluated, there the courts often look at the language on its face. There's kind of a prima facie analysis that occurs with respect to the, the exact words that were said. There's not a lot of guidance where courts look beyond the, the words themselves to say, hey, there's the immediate danger, you know, there's an immediate danger because we can imply you know, that there are these, there are these other impacts. Whether, you know, whether they would, right? I, I can't, I can't necessarily read the court's mind, but I can say, based on what I've seen kind of in, in past jurisprudence, or other jurisprudences, that it is something where, you know, they're really looking at the face value of the word. So it's got to be some pretty overt endangerment that's occurring.
All right. Other comments, folks? All right. Go ahead, Bryce.
Yeah, thank you. Obviously, I wasn't here a couple of weeks ago. So a lot of my thoughts and feelings and comments are in response to having watched the meeting as well as been following, you know, what's been going on in the graphic and whatnot. And there are a couple, a couple of things come to mind. One, and we heard a couple of folks talk about this is the importance of words. And I believe strongly that language, right, both reflects and creates reality. And in this case, my concern is that the, the words that were shared two meetings ago did reflect certain thoughts, feelings and opinions or particular theologies of the Newburgh community. But are not necessarily the types of realities that we're wanting to create here in Newburgh. Right? And so while I am uncertain as to what moving forward looks like, whether it's around censure, and I definitely want to learn more about this. I do think there's, there is an opportunity for us to move forward with putting out messages and education and statements that are aligned with who we want to be as a community, right? I don't see any reason why, regardless of how things play out, we can't push messages forward that speak to the truths that we're acknowledging, right? I would love to see this poster that the Newburgh School District had sought to make, and I'm curious as to why Allegra, I think that's what it was, the Allegra Printing Company had decided not to. I would love to see what that poster is and how it might be aligned with, again, who we would like to be as, as a community. All right, understanding that language matters a whole lot. The other part that I also feel somewhat compelled to share, and maybe this is inappropriate, I acknowledge that. I think Mike, you and I both identify as Christians. I think we've had this conversation. I do, right? I attend a local community faith community here in Newburgh. And for me, I have been taught and subscribed to the idea that as Christians, we should be known by our capacity to love. Right? And what I heard this evening is that folks not only did not feel loved, but felt threatened and targeted and marginalized. And to me, that is heartbreaking. Right? And for what it's worth, and I'm thinking specifically of John Peterson's comments and desire for an apology. I do apologize for the ways in which Christians continually fail to love and the comments that are made. Apologies I know only go so far. There need to be actions and behaviors and policies that reflect that. But for what it's worth, I do ask for forgiveness because it is wrong. Yeah, I'll go and stop there, but I do feel strongly that we need to consider who we want to be as a city and what actions we, we push out to reflect who we want to be as a city.
Thank you, Bryce. Anyone else? Go ahead, Elise.
I really, I mean, I really would like us to review council rules because if we have rules in place for a reason, and if they are you know, almost intentionally not followed, I do think that there is, there is additional language that needs to be added that is in the spirit of our council goals specifically around diversity, equity and inclusion, and that we have zero tolerance for anything that does not display a welcoming attitude towards any community member. And I also want to state that I feel like any, any statement of any personal belief that goes against any city policy should be considered for censure. And I feel strongly that the words stated by Mike are against hiring policies of the city of Newburgh. We already went through a racial discrimination lawsuit and lost. So I do think although it may open us up for whatever it is, I would, God forbid, an LGBTQIA city employee listen to this meeting and not think that we are standing with them. And I go on the record and will double down, just as Mike doubled down to the graphic, that I am in full opposition to everything that Mike said to the graphic, his lack of response to community members and email, his lack of response to me as a counselor. And I can only imagine the other feelings towards other minorities in our community.
All right. Any, anyone else? Go ahead, Jules.
Thank you, Rick. I just want to really thank every person who made, you know, a public comment. It takes a lot, you know, to be on that end and to receive that type of response to the community from one of our counselor members. It's a shame. And as a person who's gone through my own troubles, I full-heartedly support you, the LGBTQ community. I've learned so much in the past five years. Last year I participated in my first pride parade. And I took my nephews and I took that opportunity for them to learn. And now they know what pride is. So Mike, I encourage you, I encourage you who at this moment doesn't see to educate yourselves, to educate. I think we all have a learning curve. And we are all able to learn. And I've gone through my own troubles here with the city and I'm still learning. So I think the the need here is for you to open up and be willing, and it's not just you, Mike. It's a lot of other folks in the community is that willingness to learn. And I think that's where we have to start. But thank you for everyone who has stood up. Rick, I appreciate your words. And that's all I have. Thanks.
All right. Anyone else? All right. Well, if that's it, I just, you know, as the rest of you, go ahead, Bryce. I'm sorry.
No, sorry. I just put it up. What, one thing that I do feel, and I'm trying to imagine with all due respect, right, like Mike sitting in your shoes right now and feel like if I was in that spot, I would probably want to say something. And, and Rick, I respect, you know, the rules and desire to have this not sort of devolve into a argument or going back and forth. That isn't my intention. I do however, want to at least provide an option, you know, Mike, if you do have thoughts or ways that you, you would want to respond and share. If not, that's totally fair too, but I, I do feel like it would at least be appropriate to, to put it out there, right, the option to respond, because I know that there were some pretty emotion-filled and targeted comments that were made. And so if you did, you feel like you needed to, to respond in some way, I at least want to throw that out there.
Yeah, Bryce, just one thing I will say, every counselor is available to comment at any time. They can speak for up to, you know, five minutes, raise your hand and you'll be recognized by the chair. If Mike chooses to do so, that's great, but if that option is always available.
That's really fair. One thing to respond, so again, I'm, I'm, I feel like I'm remembering, right, Dr. Myangelou talks about right, knowing better and doing better. And so part of me especially is, it sounds like that we're having conversations about rules and potential censure and all that sort of stuff. Would like to make sure at least the opportunity was extended to assume that there might have been things that Mike didn't know and now does know in my potentially change. Maybe that, that's why I put, I put it out there.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments, folks? All right. As I started to say, I've obviously been thinking about this now for quite a number of weeks. As you all have mentioned, this isn't our first brush with questions of diversity, equity and inclusion, unfortunately. But I'd like to remind all of the counselors, city staff and anybody who might be listening, and certainly the people that testified this evening or provided public comment. All right. So here goes. We are a community of over 24,000 residents. We are the 26th largest city in the great state of Oregon. Our city was founded on the ancestral lands of the Yanhaelis of the Kalapoya tribe. On these ancestral lands on the banks of the river, Newburgh was founded by members of the Religious Society of Friends, the Quakers, who themselves suffered their own persecution. Now, 2021, we are the home of a vibrant traded sector manufacturing. We are home to a rapidly expanding medical community. We are home to a expanding senior living facilities. We are home to a thriving university. We are home to a local community college. We are home to dedicated volunteerism and an active nonprofit sector. We are home to fantastic wine, of course. We are home to doctors, lawyers, laborers, business owners, teachers and farm workers. I didn't include candlestick makers, but you can include winemakers. We are home to 32 churches. I think that list may be a little slight. I think it may be a little shy of the number. We are home to Buddhists, Catholics, Jews, Muslims and Protestants and others, as we heard tonight. We are home to Baptists, Friends, Lutherans, Presbyterians, Latter Day Saints and Seventh Day Adventists and others. We are home to non-believers. We are home to Asians, blacks, Hispanics, Native Americans, Pacific Islanders, whites and all others. We are home to residents of mixed race. We are home to members of both the straight and the LGBTQIA communities. We, in my opinion, it is our responsibility to show that we are a community for all. And we should be welcoming to all. Thank you. Thank you for listening. All right. Unless we have anything else, let's move on in the agenda. I think now we're on to, we've got the issue tracker where I think a couple of things from the last meeting were mentioned. You can look at that to see where we stand on those. And then I think next is the consent calendar. If someone would like to make a motion, that would be good. Mike?
Yeah, I move that we accept the consent calendar.
I'll second Denise.
All right. All in favor, signify by raising your left hands. And that looks to be unanimous. So, all righty, thank you. Next, we are moving into item eight A on our agenda. And this is one of one, two, five hearings we've got this evening. So the first, Resolution eight A, and I believe this is an administrative hearing entering an agreement with the Shaillan Valley Chamber of Commerce for visitor center services. And if I am right, this is Doug, Mr. Rux.
Thank you, Mayor. Doug Rux, Community Development Director. So as the mayor had indicated, this is an administrative public hearing. You're functioning as the Contract Review Board. The city had entered into a contract historically with the Shaillan Valley Chamber of Commerce to provide visitor center services. The most recent contract initiated in 2015 and ran through June of 2020. As we entered into the pandemic, we actually renegotiated the final year of that five-year contract. And we also were addressing the issues that Taste Newburgh had been formed in. So there were a different set of functions that the chamber was providing. So in October of 2020, I started conversations with the Chamber about providing visitor center services. You have been receiving quarterly reports from the Chamber of the Services that they provided thus far through that last year of the contract. In those discussions, we acknowledged that we were in the COVID-19. There had been reduced traffic occurring because in part the doors were closed for a period of time at the chamber to address visitors that were coming to our community. I think in your last report, you heard information that, you know, the doors have been back open again, so they are seeing and they're getting phone calls and so forth. Through those negotiations and that contract, we identified that there would be a reduction in the current year contract. So the current year contract is 75,000. We're looking now at a one-year contract that would be for $30,000. So that contract would operate between July 1st of 2021 through June 30th of 2022. As the Contract Review Board, there are findings in your packet to address the provisions of the municipal code that apply under 3.25. And so I've done an analysis on each of those particular findings. We've done the appropriate noticing for this particular hearing. Not identified that there was any preferential treatment by awarding this particular contract for a one-year period. And if the council chooses to adopt this particular resolution, there would be that opportunity again coming in October of 2021 to address the issues of a visitor center and providing services to visitors who come to Newburgh, as the mayor had indicated, for a variety of reasons. It could be that they're coming for events and activities at the university, community events that are occurring. Coming for wine tasting is often brought up, as we are the gateway to wine country. So staff's recommendation to the council in this proposal is to adopt the Resolution 2021-3732. Thank you, Mayor. We should have with us hopefully Josh Duder, Tana Faxon or Mark Moison. No one from the chamber. Okay. Thank you, sir.
All right. Oh, actually, you know, and I probably, I should have done this earlier and we'll, we'll go back and I'll check on public stuff. What about declarations of conflict of interest or abstentions, anyone? My apologies for not mentioning. What about declarations of conflict of interest or extensions? Anyone? My apologies for not mentioning this earlier. Anyone? I'm a member of the chamber. So there's a disclosure right there. Anyone else? Okay, any public testimony on Sue?
Mr. Mayor, we have not received any public testimony for Resolution 2021-3732.
Okay, and I will in that way close the testimony and the recommendation from staff.
So again, Mayor, staff's recommendation is to adopt Resolution Number 2021-3732.
My apologies, you'd already said that. Right, all right.
That's okay.
All right, any further discussion, folks? Council deliberation time. None. If someone would entertain a motion, that would be, I would entertain a motion.
I do have just one comment. I'm sorry. Just I can support this if this truly is going to be a discussion at our retreat work session around ongoing conversation with.
I don't know if you want a statement, but I would just say that that's on the agenda or would be certainly on the agenda. And we've got a. A plan for tourism and refreshing our tourism study. So that should also help as well.
All right, thank you for that. Any other, any other comments, folks? No, do we have a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, move that we adopt Resolution Number 2021-3732.
And a second.
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 Mike got it. Second by Mike. All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by raising your left hands. Pass unanimously, Sue. All righty, thank you. Next, moving on to. Where did I lost my cheat sheet? Oh, this is another administrative hearing. Resolution 3747, a supplemental budget. And I believe it's Dan Coiler who is going to present this item.
Actually, it's going to be Kesia.
It's gonna, oh, good evening, Kesia.
We're keeping you on your toes. Good evening, Council, Members of the Public Staff. I'm Kesia Warner. I'm the Assistant City Manager. And tonight I'm here to bring to you the supplemental budget number two, Resolution Number 2021-3747. There are unanticipated activities and cost drivers that occur throughout the fiscal year. And that affect the city's revenues and expenditures. Adjusting the city's budget to properly reflect these changes requires council approval. The city exercises two opportunities during the fiscal year to make these adjustments. One is in mid-year in December, and the second opportunity is at the end of the fiscal year in May or June. The changes presented in the supplemental budget are in the general government building inspections and the administrative services funds. The general government adjustments include increased funding to support those in our community affected by homelessness. Funding for 911 dispatch to cover unanticipated staffing costs related to COVID leaves. And facilities costs to create workspace configurations that conform with COVID safety requirements. The building inspection fund adjustments include increased appropriation for bank fee costs and consultant services. Associated with higher than anticipated permitting and building inspection activity. Additionally, adjustments to the administrative support services fund include a correction to. The city manager's budget, HR recruitment costs, funding to support contract finance support during staffing shortages in the department. An increase to our legal department budget during the first year using external legal counsel. An increased facilities costs related to archives building and public safety building projects. To accomplish space configuration in compliance with COVID safety requirements. The impacts of the supplemental budget number two is a net increase in total appropriations of $52,000. Bringing total appropriations to 101,051,912. Staff. Recommendation is to adopt Resolution Number 2021-3747 for approval of supplemental budget. Number two for fiscal year 2021.
Thank you, Kesia. All right, declaration of conflict of interest or extensions, anyone? Seeing none. Do we have any public testimony?
Mr. Mayor, we have not received any public testimony for Resolution 2021-3747.
I will close public testimony then, and we have the recommendation from staff. So council deliberation, folks. Comments or questions for Kesia? Seeing none, how's about a motion?
Oh, go Jules, go Jules.
Mayor, I move we adopt Resolution Number 2021-3747 for approval of supplemental budget number two for fiscal year 2020-202021.
And a second?
Second, Denise.
Denise with a second, thank you. All right, any further discussion? All in favor signify by raising your left hands. There we go. And that's unanimous as well, Sue. All righty, thank you all. Moving on to. Item 8C, and this is a legislative hearing. All right. This is ordinance 2021-202881, an ordinance amending the Newburgh Comprehensive Plan and the Stormwater Master Plan. And I've got Karen listed, but I'm not sure.
Well, Mayor, this is Doug, so I'll start this off.
Okay, thank you, Doug.
Thank you. So Doug Rux, Community Development Director. As the mayor had indicated and his reading of the title of this, this is a comprehensive plan amendment. To update from our 2014 Stormwater Master Plan to our 2021 Stormwater Master Plan. I will begin by entering the entire staff report exhibits and attachments into the public record. At this point, I'm going to turn this over to Natalie Jennings. And Natalie is going to walk through a PowerPoint on the proposed changes to the Stormwater Master Plan. And then she gets finished with her portion, then I'll come back and I'll talk about the findings and the conclusions. Thank you.
Thanks, Doug. I'm Natalie Jennings with HBH Engineers. Andre Chernishov is also on this call. He works with me. We worked on the Stormwater Master Plan update. I'm sorry, the sun's in my face. And so go ahead and advance the slides. I don't think I have control over it. Who has control? All right. So what is the Stormwater Master Plan? I should go over. This is the same presentation we had a few weeks ago. So I'm going to go through it really quickly. If there's further questions, we can come back to things. So essentially, it's a lot of parts of that make up the whole plan. It's a description of what the existing system is. The we evaluate what condition all those things are in, make recommendations. And including costs and prioritize them. Next slide, please. And why are we updating the Stormwater Master Plan? The code says that it has to be done every five years and it's been six, so we need to do that. There's also been a significant amount of change since 2014 in terms of where the development has occurred. A major change has been the design standards. It changed from the 10-year design storm to the 25-year design storm. A 10-year storm happens once every 10 years and a 25-year storm happens once every 25 years on average. Not it doesn't all occur in 2020 and then it's 2030 is the next 10-year storm. It's just statistical averages. But a 25-year storm is much worse than a 10-year storm. And so the city has been more prepared and more in line with what all of the other cities in the area are doing to make that change. We also incorporated the Riverfront Master Plan area into the master plan. Next slide, please. So the problem areas we found are shown. They're color coded and labeled with a. Letter and letters, letter dash letter C stands for capacity problem. C dash B, for example, so that's project B in the capacity. And then there's the red dots are the worst areas and orange is in the middle. And yellow is not as bad, but still a problem, less frequently flooded. All right, next slide, please. We also highlighted some maintenance issues that were found from the maintenance department. Or through reviewing CCTV of the pipes. And you can see the list there of what exactly those maintenance issues are. There's a lot more details in the report, of course. Next slide, please. There are some non-capacity and non-maintenance issues that. We addressed as well. Pipes older than 50 years old. If you look at the figure in the plan, it looks like your pipes are in pretty good shape. But unfortunately, there's just not a lot of data on most of them. So there's a fair amount of pipes that are older than 50 years old that will need to be replaced at some point. The city just doesn't know how old they are. The reason for that is the lifespan of pipe, depending on the type of it, can last anywhere from 50 to 100 years. So you want to start looking at it at about 50 years and start thinking about replacing it. The pipe material also plays into that. So cast iron, clay, steel and corrugated metal are going to degrade faster than HGP or ductile iron and things like that. We also looked at CCTV footage of. The, actually, we looked at the scores that someone else had looked at the footage for. Several pipes and we found the ones that had a score of five. Which means they'll fail in the next five years and highlighted those in the report. We also looked into the Willeamet Total Maximum Daily Load, which is a water quality standard that the city has to meet. And saw how the city needs to change to address that. There's also, we looked into the future. That's a lot of letters I realized NPDES MS4 permit. Essentially, it's just looking into the future of what requirements are going to be needed as. The city probably has to have a new kind of permit in the future. Next slide, please. Then we looked at prioritization criteria for all of the projects. I won't go into all of these in detail, but essentially if it's things like it affects a large portion of the city. But it's cheap to repair because you only have to repair 200 feet of line. That's going to be a higher priority project. We've categorized them A through J. Those are not a priority listing. Those are just different categories. So if it meets several of those categories, it's a higher priority. If it meets fewer of those criterias, it's a lower priority is more or less how we rank them. With a little engineering judgment in there as well, just to make sure that projects are making sense. Next slide, please. Here's the identified projects on here. The green areas are the capacity projects that I referred to at the beginning. The. See, sorry. Everyone else can see my own screen. The yellow are related to the PAPC, PACP scores. The purple are maintenance issues. And red and orange are pipe material and age issues. Next slide, please. Oh, and those were all the references of where to look for more details about those in the report. Here's the capital improvement plan with the prioritized projects. And see, $9.4 million is the total recommended costs. That, of course, is over a 20-year period and this report will be revisited in five years. So really, the ones you're wanting to look at is those priority one projects, which hopefully will get done in the next five years. If there's funding, fully understanding that stormwater funding is hard to come by. So. It just got to do what you got to do. Next slide, please. Then we go into a lot of the recommendations made by ourselves, HBH, as well as Doug and Brett. And Karen, and then the CAC Committee that was our citizens group that helped us. Gauge what the citizens were thinking about this process. All those recommendations are listed there. You can read them if you want to. I think we already talked about them in detail last time. So next slide, please. I'll turn it back over to Doug. Thank you.
Thanks, Natalie. Mr. Mayor, can we do one procedural thing before we get into the findings? And that would be if there were any extensions or objections to jurisdiction.
Anybody? And about hearing none, let's, I think we're ready to move on.
Thank you, Mayor. So under the findings component of this, we had to evaluate the proposal. Because this is a modification to our comprehensive plan. So we've evaluated the statewide planning goals. And that is all included in your packet for this evening. We also had to evaluate our comprehensive plan. And in both the statewide planning goals and in the Newburgh Comprehensive Plan, our findings are that we are compliant. We also had then to look at ORS 197712 and OAR 660 Division 11 Public Facilities. And we've analyzed each one of those sections from definitions all the way to the end. And concluded that we were in compliance. The final one on this, and it should be D, but Doug can't spell. Is that we had to evaluate the Newburgh Municipal Code because this is a type four procedure and it's a legislative process. So we have done all the appropriate noticing that needed to occur for tonight's hearing. Sue, next slide. So as Natalie had indicated, we had a CAC. That was actually looking at the stormwater, the wastewater and the water master plan updates. And the ad hoc committee on April 1st voted 5 to 0 recommending the council adopt the 2021 Stormwater Master Plan. Next slide. And then finally, we went to the Planning Commission and held a public hearing. And they adopted Resolution Number 2021-367. Recommending the council adopt the 2021 Stormwater Master Plan. And incorporate the most important incorporated into the comprehensive plan. Next slide. And if you would like me to now, Mayor, I'll go ahead and give the recommendation. So staff's recommendation is to adopt ordinance number 2021-2881. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyway, any public testimony, Sue?
Mr. Mayor, we have no public testimony received for ordinance 2021-2881.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you. We already have the recommendation from staff. Any other questions or comments? Time for council deliberation, folks. Hearing none. All right, how's about a? We want to roll call vote up.
Mr. Mayor, would you like for me to read?
I certainly would.
I love the ordinance. My pleasure. In front of the council is ordinance number 2021-2881, an ordinance amending the Newburgh Comprehensive Plan 9. 2014 Stormwater Master Plan incorporating the 2021 Stormwater Master Plan.
Mr. Mayor, are we holding this over for a second reading?
Sorry, that indeed is the other question. Does anyone?
I was, I was going to do that motion.
Nice.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the second reading.
Do we have a second?
Second.
At least with a second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by raising your left hands. Yep, got that. All right. And now, now for the motion, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we adopt ordinance 2021-2881 and ordinance amending the Newburgh Comprehensive Plan. 2014 Stormwater Master Plan incorporating the 2021 Stormwater Master.
Anything else on that? Are we good?
Did I miss something, James?
Read by title only.
By title only. Dang it.
Yeah.
And I'll second it.
Not the second.
I was on the committee. So I'm having.
Nice, nice. All right, all right. And this one, we want a roll call vote. Yes, Sue? All righty, a roll call vote, please.
This is the roll call vote for ordinance 2021-2881. Counselor McBride?
Yes.
Counselor Cofield?
Yep, yes.
Counselor Yarnell Holloman?
Yes.
Counselor Martinez Plankarte?
Yes.
Mayor Rogers?
Yes.
Counselor Bacon?
Yes.
And Counselor Finley is absent this evening. So it's 6:01.
Thank you very much. And thank you, Natalie, Andre, thank you. Doug and everyone else who worked on this. Denise and all the members of the CAC, thank you very much. And the Planning Commission for everybody seemed to have worked on this. So thank you. Thank you very much. All right, it looks like we are now on to item 8D, another legislative. All right, it looks like we are now on to item 8D, another legislative hearing, this one on ordinance 2883 zoning for riverfront annexations. And I have Doug.
Thank you, Mayor. So Doug, again, Doug Ruck's Community Development Director. So what we have before you tonight is an ordinance doing an amendment to Title 15, specifically Section 15.250.080. So Sue, next slide. And I should begin also by stating, entering the entire staff report with its exhibits and attachments into the public record. So as we were going through all of the implementation measures for the Riverfront Master Plan, inadvertently, I missed one. I didn't look at the annexation chapter for some reason. And so this is the final cleanup of what we need to do to, one of the implementations of the Riverfront Master Plan. So at the time of annexations, as the language is alluding to here, is that there's a corresponding comprehensive plan and zoning designation that is given to the property. So next slide, Sue. So this may be a little bit difficult to read, but there is some double underline. So if you go down to the mix, and so this is a is related to the mixed area, which is the mixed employment in the Riverfront Master Plan. It's about 21 and a half acres. And so the proposal here is to add the M dash E into that mixed category so that at the time of annexation, the mixed designation and the ME zoning would apply to that property. Also, when reviewing this particular section of the code, we have our industrial. And as identified in the previous sections is there are different types of industrial, M1, 2, 3, and 4, and of course, airport industrial, is that the director makes the determination that this part of that recommendation that comes to the council about what that comp plan and zoning designation will end up being. And so we wanted to add that. Next slide. As we have to do with all of our development code amendments by state law is that we evaluated against the statewide planning goals, and our findings indicate that we are in compliance. We did the similar evaluation to the Newburgh Comprehensive Plan and concluded that the proposal is compliant with the comp plan goals and policies. And then in C, and I didn't have a D this time because I can't spell on this PowerPoint slide, is that we have municipal code, this is a Type 4 procedure, and it's a legislative public hearing. Next slide, Sue. So the Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on this, and they approved resolution 2021-370, which is recommending the council adopt the Development Code Amendment. And I can give you the staff recommendation now, Mayor, if you would like. Staff's recommendation is that you adopt ordinance number 2021-2883. Thank you.
Thank you. Conflicts of interest or abstentions, anyone?
Mayor, I live in the Riverfront Master Plan area.
Right. Thank you for that. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. All right. Public testimony, Sue?
Mr. Mayor, we have not, we do not have any public testimony for ordinance 2021-2883.
Okay, I will close public testimony then. And now a city attorney's announcement, please.
In front of the council for approvals, ordinance number 2021-2883, an ordinance amending the Newburgh Municipal Code, Title 15, Section 15.250.080, Comprehensive Plan and zoning designations.
Thank you for that. Now I would, if someone would like to entertain a motion to waive the second reading.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the second reading. This Denise.
And Elise with a second. All right. All in favor signify by raising your left hands. And that's unanimous, Sue. All right. And now for the motion itself, please. And remember that by title only.
I can do it. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 2021-2883 and read by title only.
And a second?
Second.
Second, Mike, thank you. All right. Any further discussion? This, too, requires a voice vote.
Mr. Mayor, this is the roll call vote for ordinance 2021-2883. Counselor McBride?
Yes.
Counselor Cofield?
Yes.
Counselor Yarnell Holloman?
Yes.
Counselor Martinez Plankarte?
Yes.
Mayor Rogers?
Yes.
Counselor Bacon?
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor, Counselor Finley is absent this evening. It's 601.
Thank you very much. All right. Next, on your program, item 8E, a legislative hearing regarding ordinance 2882, the legal description of city limits. And I have Mr. Ruck.
Thank you, Mayor. I think again on this one, might you want to start off with the abstentions or objections?
Any conflicts of interest or abstentions, folks? Seeing none, let's move along to.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Doug Ruck's Community Development Director. So in the Newburgh Charter, Chapter 1, Section 4, there is language that relates to the boundaries. The last sentence in that particular paragraph indicates that the city will maintain a, as a public record, an accurate and current description of the boundaries. So every year, when we do have annexations, we come forward to the city with an updated legal description of the city limit boundaries to be in compliance with the city's charter. So these annexations, we had one annexation over the last period. That was a piece of property out off of North East Chehalum Drive. As we started in this process, because there was a number of years it was not done, and we picked it up again about five years ago. And so we've already double-checked with the Department of Revenue. This is not an annexation process. This is adopting the legal description of the city. And we coordinate with the County Assessor's Office, and they end up getting a final copy of the adopted ordinance, so they have that information on their record as well. And then we have digital files of the legal description that's provided to GIS. We have that in our GIS layer. And that's really what I have for this legislative hearing. The staff's recommendation is to adopt ordinance number 2021-2882. Thank you.
All right. Any, any questions from staff or of staff, folks? All right, seeing none. How's about the city attorney announcement, please? Strike that. Public testimony, my apologies. Sue?
That's what I was saying.
For this.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we do not have any public testimony for ordinance 2021-2882.
Thank you very much. Now the announcement from the city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In front of the council is ordinance number 2021-2882, an ordinance adopting a new legal description of the Newburgh city limits.
All right. Could I get a motion to waive the second reading, if you are so inclined?
Sure, I'm on a roll. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the second reading.
And a second?
Second.
At least with a second. All in favor signify by raising your left hands. And that's unanimous, Sue. All right. And now the, now the motion. And by title only.
Mr. Mayor? Hello? Oh, you're. Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance 2021-2882, an ordinance adopting new legal description of the Newburgh city limits, read by title only.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Jules with a second. All right, any further discussion? All right, this legislative hearings requires a voice vote as well, please.
This is the roll call vote for ordinance 2021-2882. Counselor McBride?
Yes.
Counselor Cofield?
Yes.
Counselor Yarnell Holloman?
Yes.
Counselor Martinez Plankarte?
Yes.
Mayor Rogers?
Yes.
Counselor Bacon?
Yes.
And Counselor Finley is absent, so the vote is 601, Mr. Mayor.
All righty, thank you very much. That ends the hearings for this evening. We're now on item nine and 9A, Council Committee Reports. If you all have anything that you would like to report out to the council and to the public. All right, hearing none. Are there any other items of business that you would like to discuss before we adjourn? Anything? Okay. All right, then. Otherwise, thank you all. Thank, thank you actually for your volunteerism, all of you. I think it's sometimes in these discussions and all of this, it gets lost that nobody's making a whole ton of money doing this. So thank you, counselors. Staff, thank you, right? Thank you for all that you do every day to make Newburgh a better place. So, so thank you. Otherwise, that's what we got, and we'll see you the beginning of July. So try to stay cool tonight if you can, you know, and stay safe out there. So thank you. Have a nice evening. Bye-bye.